Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To recall for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, welcome to the April 14th, 2016 meeting of the Villarionbeck Board of Trustees. This is a special meeting, our budget, our public hearing for our 2016-17 fiscal year. So I got some comments before we open the public hearing. So first, I'd like to thank Karen, our treasurer, for all her hard work in getting this budget together.
Thank you Karen.
As well as everybody here on the board for your hard work and the department heads that put their work into it as well to keep us, keep us under the cap. So if you have a copy of the budget, you'll notice at the top that we started our budget workshop process back in early December. We've had six meetings, this will be our seventh. And we do have our final meeting scheduled for April 28th, that will be our, when we will adopt the budget. Some highlights for this year. To close out the past fiscal year, we added to our fund balance, and we hope to add again this year, our fund balance is at the close of 14, 15 was $581,545, or almost exactly 25% of our operating budget, that's in the general fund. The comptroller recommends 20 to 25, so we're in good shape. We had been drawing from the fund balance for a few years there, but now we're consistently adding back to it. So that's, that's a positive for us. If you look at page eight, that kind of shows us the bottom, the bottom line is that we have increased our rate by one cent per thousand, which brings us under the tax cap by $207. So we will not be exceeding the tax cap again this year for the second time in a row. We started a contingency line last year to give us a little cushion, and this year we were able to increase it to 25,000. Of note, we have not touched our 20,000 from last year, so hopefully we will keep our spending under control in the next six weeks or so, and be able to put that into the fund balance as well. That's reflected on page two, if you want to see that, towards the bottom, third line from the bottom, $25,000 for contingency line. Next highlight would be on page six. Under the equipment reserve, so this is something that we also started funding again in most categories last year, so we're continuing funding equipment reserves for the fire department, the street department, police department. And this year, we've added funding for sidewalks at $15,000, and parks for $10,000. So those are two, two additions to our reserves. Also of note, not exactly reflected on here, but we will be making our last payments on the ladder truck, the fire truck, the Ariel one this year, as well as the highway truck. So that should put us in pretty good shape when we get to this spot next year. If you look at the very, very back, last page, under the mountain capital reserve, one highlight is that we have saved almost $100,000 towards, in the fire reserves, which will go a long way towards purchasing a fire truck, which we just opened bids last week. So when it comes time to actually make that purchase, we should have about $150,000 in reserve to put towards that purchase, which is, I think, in better position than we have been in the past. To touch briefly on the water budget, we saw a modest increase, increase to our budget, which was offset by a modest increase in revenue. And in the sewer budget, we showed a moderate decrease, which was related to a decrease from 3.6 full-time employees to, and even 3.0 employees. That's about all I have in terms of summary. Do you guys have any comments you want to make before we open the public hearing?
No.
So I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing related to the 2016-17 Villarionbeck budget.
Second.
Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Open to the public. Any comments Danielle? Okay.
There's no public.
With, yes. With no further comments, I'd like to make the motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so of note is that we will be back on the 28th to finalize the budget and hopefully adopt it with no further changes. Next, we have a public hearing on an amendment to the parking on West Market Street, and also, I believe, on Oak Street. Do you have it there, Scott?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, that's all. So I'd like to open, or make a motion to open the public hearing in regard to the amendment to the parking.
Second.
Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So basically, we're extending the, the two-hour parking on West Market Street and, and the south portion of Oak Street. You guys have any comments on that?
How, the south portion of Oak Street?
It goes, starting 80 feet from the north curb line of West Market Street, 205 feet from there. So basically, the first section of Oak Street is already no parking, right? And then it's going to extend up to the, the property line of 47 West Market. So the first residential property up until that point will be, will be two-hour parking only.
Okay.
Okay.
So currently, just for a little bit of background, everything else in, in the village district is, is two-hour parking. So this happened to be a piece that wasn't part of that original plan, and based on some, some requests that we've received, I guess over the last couple of months, we've decided, we've seen the issue that exists there, and decided to add this piece onto the rest of the, into the rest of the district.
Right. Without further comment, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on the amendment to the vehicle and traffic regulation related to parking.
Second.
Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the amendment as submitted and just discussed.
Second.
Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just want to say I'm going to leave these five, these countries with the third, in case anybody has any questions. And please feel free to get ahold of me if you have any questions.
Okay, we do have an amendment that you wanted to do?
Yes.
A budget amendment?
Yes.
Yes. We got moving along so quickly, almost forgot.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Quickly.
I thought that's why you were chomping at the mouth.
If you look on page 10, halfway down the page, the water budget in 14-15 was 981-88, and then in 15-60 was 905-190, and we're proposing 947-819. I'd make a recommendation that the board increase the current budget by 30,000, making it 935,000, as there are two, the salary line items, I don't know, there was an error, and they're under budget. So, two things, it'll, it'll take care of the two line items that are under budget, and it will put the budget more in line with what it was in 14-15 and in 16-17.
Okay.
So this is not due to increases, it's due to just a error in the calculation?
Correct. Correct. It is not due to any increase, no.
So you want to change the 947 to?
No, I want to change the current budget, which is 905-190.
Okay.
To 935-190.
The 15-60 budget?
Right.
Correct. The budget that we're in right now.
Okay.
So I'll make the motion to approve the amendment as submitted by the treasurer.
Second.
Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you Karen.
Okay, I'm good. If you have any questions, please get on here.
Okay. Well, our next two agenda items, we don't have any representatives to talk about them, so we'll go right on to the IT update. We did have a meeting today with the town, Gary gave us the update as to our.
Just very briefly, we did have a meeting with the town and county today reviewing the current status of the IMA that we have, that's being, has to be signed between the town and the village. Just so everybody knows, I've been working very closely with the town, with Alan Scher, on coming up with where we are trying to proceed forward. So we basically came, we had a third party come in and evaluate the hardware that's over to town, and the hardware was deemed usable, and would serve the purposes of both the town and the village, but we need to go forward with a plan now of how to implement that hardware for the village and for the town for shared services. So with that, we walked out of that saying that we need to amend or edit the current IMA to include what we think is appropriate for the, both the town and the village with shared services. And Alan and I are going to do that, we'll present it to both boards, and then proceed from there.
That's good.
Good.
How's the meeting?
Agreed.
So what is the, what does the current IMA say that makes us need to amend it?
Well, that's one of the things I want to review as part of that, and I need time to review that IMA in detail, which I have not.
Just so everybody knows, IMA is a contributable agreement.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
So this is related to a technology grant that was awarded by the county for shared services to the town and the village, I believe in 2013?
2013, yes.
Okay, I think 13, and we're still working on the implementation. The IMA, which was not executed at the time, only included the rollout, but now we're looking to amend it to include ongoing service and shared costs of, you know, maintaining the server and the internet provider, et cetera.
And a more detailed step-by-step plan of how we need to implement that, that we can all stand by and say, this is what we're going to do.
Right, so we can, yeah, so we can all be comfortable with the agreement moving forward.
Yep.
So, thank you Gary for your work on, on that. Anybody got anything else?
I have two.
Yes.
Two things.
Oh, of course.
Well, one is, I want to let everybody know that we received on Tuesday, three bids for the fire truck. They ranged in price from $464,000 to $506,000. The low bid was Garrison Fire Supply from Helenville, New York. The truck committee took the proposals, three proposals are still in the clerk's office, and the truck committee from the fire department took the other three proposals, and were reviewing them for completeness. And I expect them at the next meeting to come back and make a recommendation based on their findings. That's the status of, of that. So we were successful, at least we're very lucky, we're fortunate to get three bids, and they're relatively close, $44,000 between the high and the low, which is pretty good. And then lastly, is we got four bids for the work on West Market Street. Crawford Associates received them, opened the bids, reviewed them, did some follow-ups with some of the contractors, and they have made, made a recommendation based on their findings and based on the bids that were proposed. The two low bidders were Sunup Enterprises at $61,517, and then TJR Incorporated at $69,500. The reason that I've included TJR, that slightly higher than Sunup, is because we asked for alternate pricing. One of the things that wasn't part of the base bid was the replacement of the sidewalk, 604 square feet of sidewalk adjacent to the area that we're replacing all the drainage. So with the alternate in play, TJR is the lower of the two, because TJR proposes to do the sidewalk for $9,000, and Sunup proposes to do it for $18,000. So with those two things in play, there's about a $2,000 difference between TJR and Sunup. TJR, for everyone that doesn't know, was the contractor that did the dam work for us down at Crystal Lake. We're quite happy with their, their work there. So it goes based on whether, you know, it would be my suggestion that we replace the sidewalk there, the sidewalk there is in poor condition. I think $9,000 is a good value for that sidewalk to have it replaced, it's about $15 a square foot.
And there's also, was the additional one for the curb?
Well, curb is included.
It is.
Curb's included in the base bid, so.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. So we'll get curb, well, as, as part of the 60, let's, let's talk about TJR, for $69,500, where they, all the drainage work, catch basins, the piping, and we get curbs. But when they're digging so close to the, to the sidewalk, what's going to happen is the ground's going to get undermined, and the sidewalks that are in poor condition to begin with will start decaying. So it's a really good opportunity to get 600 square feet of sidewalk replaced at $9,000.
Does that include the, the piping that goes to daylight across the property?
That doesn't, I don't know exactly how the, where they drew the line.
Okay.
I think it does. It's just on the roadway. I think, I think it crosses over, I think it crosses over the driveway or the sidewalk piece of it.
Yeah.
Dead ends, and then from there, it gets picked up by the Violet, Violet Village Close. Because when I did the walkthrough with, with Crawford and, and the contractors, they, that's where they drew the line, to saying this is the extent of the construction limits, we're just on the other side of the driveway.
Okay. So the assumption is that the sidewalk is going to get damaged extensively during the construction process?
Exactly.
Okay.
That is already in poor shape.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And it's a good opportunity. So then, and part of, the other part of what I asked for is, I tried to get a lot of information included in this bid for us, for us to be able to use going forward. Because there's also a, a second part of this project, which addresses the north side of West Market Street. And so it's a two-phase project, the, the major phase is the south side of West Market, and then the second phase is the north side. So we got pricing for that as well, we don't know, we're not exactly sure if we need that piece of it just yet, but for budget purposes, we have those numbers. So in the future, if we need to include in our budget a number for catch basins and drainage piping on the north side, we'll have a general sense of what that will cost. The other thing I asked for was linear feet of curb and square footage of sidewalk, in the case that we want to replace some other sidewalks that's adjacent to the, the construction site that we're working on. One of the things that we've always talked about, at least in the last year or two, is replace or installing a sidewalk from, from West Market Street up to the Thompson SRL Park. That's been something that's been mentioned to me many times, that we don't have a good or safe pathway from the village up to the park. And so I was thinking that if somehow we could get, you know, whether it be some grant money, that maybe we can include it as a part of this, and that's why I asked for those unit prices, so that maybe this, a way to make it a part of this project. So I'm not sure of that yet, so just for today, I would make the recommendation that we hire TJR at $69,500, and select their alternate to replace the sidewalk for $9,060, for a total of $78,560.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
Okay, discussion? How about the alternate that included the north side, where did they fall out on that?
They didn't include that in, in this.
Oh, that's not in the?
That's not included.
Tabulation?
It's not in this tabulation.
Okay.
It only was for budget purposes in the future, and we weren't considering it as part of this.
Yep.
Fiscal year, so I didn't have them included.
Were they, do you know, Pat, were they pretty close?
Uh, in price, I, I don't know.
Okay.
But it made the whole project go from $78,000 to nearly $200,000.
Right.
So the second part of this is substantial money.
So, just a question I have, we talked about CHIPS money, and CHIPS money, can that be used for curbs, or is that not, is that limited to?
Maybe for the curb, we'll have to look at that, but not for, not for the sidewalk.
No, I agree, not for the sidewalk. And I shouldn't be asking for the curb. Would it be worthwhile to look at using that money, because that money comes to us, it's going to go wash, right? That to use that for the curbs rather than paying it out?
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, that's the plan, is to use the CHIPS money for, for some projects.
For some fix, but, well, that was my second question, you know, out of CHIPS, would it all come out, would all, all of this come out of CHIPS, or?
I think we had a piece, we had some plan for some of it to come out of CHIPS, and some to come out of the highway budget.
Yeah, we have that, yeah.
So we would deplete the CHIPS budget quite with this, and then take the rest out of highway?
Well, I don't know if we take all the CHIPS money.
Yeah.
I don't know off the top of my head how much is in CHIPS.
From budgetary, where's the best to pull the money from, is the question?
I, I don't, I think we, we got so many projects we can do, it doesn't really matter, because we, we use CHIPS money to pave roads, which.
Right.
We have a few roads we're talking about, we had, we already kind of have a lot of the CHIPS money spent on paving roads, if we want to do Montgomery Street or. I think, how we saying though, that we have a fund of money from a couple of different lines.
Right.
Whether it be CHIPS, whether it be highway, to fund this project, and then obviously use, and we can use CHIPS money towards this piece.
Yep.
Or highway money towards this piece, but we have a.
A fund.
Of, of multiple lines that we can draw from.
Right.
We have $30,000 in the budget for storm drain repair, or, or.
Yeah.
That's, that's part of.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So there's $30,000 there, and then we have CHIPS money.
Right, so we'd use that plus CHIPS money.
And we're going to have some snow money left over for this year, so.
Well, Karen already left, but she's got ideas for that already, or some things, some lines that were overspent this year.
Okay. But this, this project was planned and funded.
Right.
Right.
I just want to clarify the motion, you said to hire, so your, your motion for, to award the bid to TJR?
To award the bid to TJR Incorporated.
For $78,560.
For $78,560, that's the base bid plus alternate one. And that replaces the sidewalk adjacent to this construction area.
Thank you.
Yes. Any further discussion?
Yeah, yeah, I just want to know, I know we're supposed to supply the equipment, the materials for, from the, say the sidewalk down to the back. That's. The valley too, to Ryonbeck Village Place. Right, and they're going to put that in there, so which part do you suggest we start first?
Start this part first.
Well, I think they should be done concurrently.
Right.
But yes, this, this is, this is going to be about a three-week-long project, so probably towards the end of the three weeks, that we ask Ryonbeck Village Place to do their piece. And when do they plan on starting? Well, I spoke to Ed Cowall, and May was when they planned on starting.
Okay.
They're already going to. Well, that should all work out. Demolish the building and do some side work. Schedule should work out then, hopefully.
It's going to have to.
It has to.
Yeah, otherwise there's going to be water going nowhere.
Well, yeah, that's why I'm asking, I didn't want him to, I didn't know if he's going to start later in the fall, or.
Alright.
Okay.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Who seconded it?
How we seconded it?
I seconded it.
Yeah, we were.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright.
Very nice.
So we have an update on porch vests.
Yes.
You just made it. If we hadn't been in discussion, we would have, we'd have been all over.
I think it's because you changed your.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm confused too. I'm confused too.
So, Liz, that's well.
Are you okay with the mic there Danielle, or do you want this one?
Um, as long as you can face me a little, I should be fine, yeah. Thank you? Okay. So this is about porch vest, September 17, in Ryonbeck. I think the last time I submitted some information, I submitted signatures, but that was just a partial initial go-out to Chestnut Street. So I have an updated signature list, with about 30 signatures.
Okay.
Um, Platt, Chestnut, and Livingston. There are, we know the birthday asterisks, so the homeowners who are willing to let us use their homes and their porches for events. There hasn't been a house I've stopped at that hasn't been supported. I haven't stopped at every house, but every house I have managed to get to, everyone's has been very excited about the idea.
That's good.
I also, I think I sent in, I've got insurance coverage from Freely and Rockow that would give, it would miss the fairground as well as the village as insurance, and we're, it's a million dollar per each.
Per currency?
Yeah. Not a per, I think it works out.
Per each one?
Pat, did you send the, the new insurance requirements from NYMER to list?
No, it's not, it's not, the board should, I think we have, have a board for the back and up.
Okay. Yeah, man, I think we have to, because they're our carrier, so. So we have, I don't think it's going to be much different, but we have guidelines from our, from the village insurance.
We have a sample application, or insurance.
So it just sets the limits of what they want to see for events here to cover them. So Pat will get that to you.
Okay. The fairgrounds signed up on that, this is, that was, you know, enough for them, they were happy with that amount. And they're giving us the corner parking lot on Mulberry and Platt. So that's where I'm at, I have a committee meeting, my first committee meeting, April 21st, at my house, I kind of didn't want to move forward with that until I kind of got an okay, just because I don't feel like, the next step would be to solicit musicians, and I don't want to start doing that unless I can tell them it's a definite, I don't want to have to get back to them and say. So that's, that's where I'm at. I don't know where else to really.
What was our status before, did we have the, from the police department, the fire department, did they sign off yet on the application?
I think Pete had.
Have you had any conversations with, started and done, from the police department?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I have a graphic artist, this son who's doing a logo, paint a logo out there, I don't know if you can see that. I have a friend who's willing to get a website up in Ryonbeck for a porch vest.
Still discussing food trucks too?
Yes. But I, because again, I didn't want to give it to be creepy on.
But I just didn't, I don't know if they're still in the plan?
Yes, the plan is, I'm thinking two food trucks per street, and just, I'm happy to have one in my driveway, I'm going to see if I can get five other homeowners who are willing to do the same. I've got a quote for four portable toilets for $25. I guess, I don't know if there's certain locations there are not allowed, or I don't know how that works, but I've looked into that, quote on that.
So the way, the way that we talked about it last time was, so it's the three streets and with the porches, and then like Mulberry would be kind of like the connector of.
Exactly, the, the streets that will be blocked off will be from Route 9 to Mulberry, Platt, Chestnut, Livingston.
Right.
Just that one block, three wide.
And then I thought maybe that the, that Mulberry Street would be like the connector of things, those food trucks would be there, the porta-potties would be there, that would be kind of the link that people could always congregate at the end and make their way.
Well, that's the thing, I didn't know if there's something I could do, that, you know, where the police barriers are, whether a food truck could be there, you know, crossing the street right there, I don't know if that's.
Well, we're closing.
I think you're talking about closing Mulberry.
Yeah.
For those three, between Platt and Chestnut.
How do people get, alright, so I'm just, I'm not sure how you.
I'm not, I'm not making plans, I'm just, I just wanted.
No, I'm just trying, my, my thought was that it would just be, you know, a, a cross from each of the streets on Mulberry, so Mulberry would still have flow traffic, that was my understanding, but the.
They have the sidewalks, I mean, and that, that could work, I mean, you could park a food truck right at the end of.
Well, that's, that's.
End of vision of the three streets.
I should do that, right?
Yeah, I mean, if they're closed, why not?
Right? So that would be three food trucks.
Yeah.
You could put one down at my end, or maybe, I don't know, maybe the church parking lot, I would be there, I don't know.
Just wondering if we're going to have so many pedestrians though?
Yeah.
Your major, your major parking area is going to be at the fair. going to be at the fair, and everyone's kind of worked their way across and up and down Mulberry.
If those trucks are there.
Well, yeah, I mean, is it worth keeping it open, or?
I, I was thinking we should close Mulberry.
I thought so too.
The only, because there's not really a lot of sidewalks on that side of Mulberry, on the same sides-
Well, you're, you're talking about two more barriers really, because you're, you're going to put fairgrounds, and then, yeah, I mean, that gives us more space and it gives more-
Be safer.
Safer pedestrian traffic, and, yeah.
Is that better for you? I mean, that's, that would be, I would agree with that.
Yep. I think that makes more sense.
Well, then you could space the porta-jams at the end of each of the streets.
Yeah, it's, I thought is that, yeah, you could either park them in the middle of the street at Mulberry and have them scattered, that could be lined up.
Want to be in my committee?
Assuming you can keep, move them.
This is my first go-to, so I'm not sure how, just how it all works, but.
How many, have, you know, one thing, Pete Dunn and Kyle Amy, you know, certainly going to weigh in on this, is there something, and I know they do it in Ithaca?
Mm-hmm.
What do you think the attendance is going to be? And that's going to be, we're going to need to know, like, car, we're going to have, have a general sense of how many cars we could expect, how many people, they're going to want to be able to staff EMTs and do those kind of things, so.
You know, I don't, it's hard to say. I mean, I wish, I mean, I know that Ithaca, every year it's getting bigger, but that, originally they were eleven years ago, so they were doing it a lot. Some people, every year look forward to this event, and I think they had a hundred musicians last year. You know, I'm trying, I think this year, I'm trying to keep it very small and compact and see how it, you know, how it plays out, see how it's received from the community, and, and then-
Isn't that how Woodstock started like that, that thought a few people were going to come?
Yeah.
Oh, we got the whole fairgrounds right there, we can just-
I said, I don't know if you know Andrew Stewart, my name is-
Yes, of course.
He said, uh, he said, "I'm real worried if it rains, what's going to happen?" And I asked, and I said to him, I said, "If it rained three days, it would stop."
But anyway, those are the things that I think, you know, maybe you can meet with your committee and, you know, decide on, on those things, and then maybe after that meeting, come and make a proposal to, you know, to us and to the police department and the fire department.
I'll go more.
I think it's moving forward. It sounds like, I, I like the idea a lot.
Yeah, I think we're all in support of it. I think that one of the key next steps would be to schedule a meeting with Pete for the police department. Yeah, particularly, I mean, definitely Kyle, but Pete here, he works with all the events that happen, and we're just planning the, the next marathon last week, so, you know, he's kind of got that, that system down pat as to-
Can I, can Pete, Liz, what I'll do is I'll, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I, I will email Pete and I'll CC you on it-
Great.
-with your contact information, so that it can all, is that okay?
Sure.
There's one more question.
What, what hours is this going to be?
I'm thinking, I think if we could block the streets off at ten, but, so giving the musicians an hour at least to set up and just kind of get everything organized, I'm thinking music starting around eleven. That's what I was going to say. So I'm figuring, say, right now, I have fifteen homes, and I'm thinking three sets of musicians per home, and they get an hour time slot, and then you strategically, you know, have them playing so they're not competing with each other. So, that's three times, so.
Forty-five.
Forty-five, forty-five sets of musicians. I don't think, I don't think buying musicians is going to be difficult, I really don't. And I don't want to discourage, you know, young musicians in the area, you know, students from school, and they have a little, you know, fan that they want to put out there for an hour, so I don't know.
Sounds good. And when do you think it will end? Half time tonight?
I was thinking like four, and I thought, keep the streets locked to five.
Okay. And the seventeenth is Saturday or Sunday?
It's a Saturday.
Saturday.
And, is it, is it dark, is it dark at five? I don't know, it's a fog sometime, I don't know. That's fine. Because I'd like some, you know, cleanup crews going around, showing some garbage on the streets, and-
Maybe they can use the same cleanup crew as Center Claus uses. That's us.
Yeah.
Thanks, Alan.
Yeah, that's all right.
So I'll speak to Pete and wait for me?
Yeah, tomorrow I'll get, I'll send everything, and then I'll copy this again, so that Pete has the original application.
Right, and you'll have the insurance?
And I'll have a letter from Andy at the fair, so Pete will have everything, so I can then-
Yeah, I mean, the, the new guidelines?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
And Kyle also?
Yes.
Yeah.
When I say Pete, I'm sorry, yes.
Fire department.
Yeah, they were CC'd on your, so.
I graduated.
Oh, you have some pull.
No, I don't, I know.
For vocal, right?
I graduated with Kyle, where did Pete live in my class?
I know, he might have been, he's right around there.
Yeah, I mean, Kyle definitely lives there.
That's good.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Uh, yeah, I'm just scheduled. I wasn't expecting, and Pat was so gracious to print out and pass out to everybody the request for bid for the removal and disposal alone of sludge. So this is the second revision of the package that's ready to go out. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to read it, or go over it, or any comments, but if not, I'd like to push this forward and get this out for bid as soon as possible now. I'd like to make a motion about the bid, add, work with Crawford to get this out.
Second.
Discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will contact Crawford when it's set up.
Fantastic. Anything else in there?
Did you want to do this? Did you get this?
No, we're going to wait till the regular meeting for that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, did she want this?
I think that's, given that's a Pat for the, it looks like the original, though, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the whole idea behind, oh, just, I'll clear up one thing.
Yes.
So, the insurance, and what it, what it is, is that we have, our insurance company requires people who are holding events or doing things within the village to have a certain level of insurance, certain limits per occurrence and those type of things. And so all's I asked for was for them to produce a form, their certificate, that's blank, because it, because it could, it's, the name of it's going to be the Boy Scouts or the high school or whoever had an event, but on the right-hand side, it will have all the limits of what they need to match. And also it is a sample for you to give it to them and say, just, your certificate should look just like this, and it should have us as the additional insured, and then, and that's all.
And I did, I did ask that.
Okay.
And then-
But they put the village of Ryman Beck in that.
I CC'd you, and I knew some people didn't contact them, so.
Okay.
I didn't know where it was at.
Yeah, no, it's, it should be some, it should, also it is just, because you know, we, when we get insurance certificates, they're kind of all over the place as far as copy.
Right.
And I just want an agent to be able to look at that and say, oh, we need to match these, okay.
Right. There's has to be a million per occurrence, and five million for the event, or whatever.
Two million dollar umbrella.
Just like car insurance.
Exactly right.
Yeah. All right, so, no other regular business? I would like to make a motion to enter executive session to discuss labor contract negotiation.
Second.
Discussion. All's in favor?
Aye. I'll go back in for it.
Yeah.
Do you want me to stay for executive session?
No.
Okay, do you want to say goodbye?
Yes. Like to make a motion to close the meeting?
Second.
Discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.